All right, welcome everybody. We will call to order the June twenty fourth, two thousand twenty four meeting of town council. Please rise with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag and the United States of America, into the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
Uh, before we get started here, a couple announcements, uh, the town is currently accepting applications for the role of town manager. Uh, detailed information, application, instructions can be found on the town website. Uh, additional announcement is save the date for community day will be held on Saturday, September fourteenth. And I think we can also announce national night out is August ninth, thank you. We were there, we just inverted. Uh, are there any other announcements from any other members of council? Okay, by this time I will turn it over to our solicitor Steve Corbell for a public hearing on regulations for tattoo piercing.
Thank you very much, President Singer. RJ, did you have anything that you wanted to say about it? I'll call you up in a second. Okay, I will call to order the public hearing um, on the zoning amendment. Part thirteen of the zoning ordinance to revise section thirteen oh three point one eighty and table thirteen oh three point E principal uses, service uses to add and amend regulations for tattoo slash piercing parlors within the town. Um, at this point, before we ask for public comment, I'll ask um, RJ Susko to come forward to uh, make a brief presentation to town council on the topic.
Good evening. You're getting started with me early tonight. Um, so I'll, I'll try to keep it quick, but um, what the reason that I want to make sure to actually make a report at the top of this hearing is because we did, of course, review this amendment with the planning commission. Um, and so it is my charge to bring forward their comments as part of the hearing. Um, I do want to also note that at least at this point, I have not received any direct public comment provided to me. Um, outside of, you know, this official public hearing, so all that I'm bringing forward are the planning commission comments and as just a quick refresher, this amendment was proposed a couple of months ago, um, when we had a, is this, by the way, are we okay with this mic here? I know that, okay, cool. That sounds better. Um, so this amendment was brought forward a few months ago. We have a resident in the town that is interested in opening a tattoo shop um, in a building that currently would not be permitted in in the MU district, which is also not listed as a use.
One second, RJ. Can the uh, members in the back hear?
Ah, all right. Let's, let's just play a little bit of hot and cold until we get the mic right. How's, how's this? We good?
No, your mic.
Oh. Okay, can we, can we hear me now? Is that? Better? Okay.
Speak normally.
Let's just try it now. How about this?
Okay.
Okay. All right, no, that's, that's okay. I'd rather we get it right. Um, anyway, so this amendment was generated from those discussions, you know, with the resident and the council member. Um, where we did take a look and say, you know, maybe this was a bit more restrictive than we wanted it to be. It was kind of just templated into the zoning code um, as we were amending it. And, you know, we wanted to take a closer look, more individual to McCandless as part of this amendment. So, um, as currently proposed, it adds the tattoo piercing parlor use as permitted in all of our mixed use districts, which also function as our commercial districts. Um, and it removes a, an additional setback from the entire property to another entire property for a series of uses that mostly could be classified as institutional, um, you know, childcare, religious, school, um, medical offices and hospitals. Those are all things that in, you know, the language that we have initially passed, you had to be an extra two hundred and fifty feet from lots that contain those for any lot that contained a building with a tattoo and piercing parlor. And we've determined that that's a bit too strong for what our actual zoning map is in, in practice. So those are the two things that are being contemplated by the amendment. Um, the planning commission took two meetings, the first meeting just as a brief intro, and then the second one um, to actually have some more in-depth discussion. Uh, there were mixed opinions on the planning commission. The majority um, were able to arrive at an opinion on the districts. They were actually not in favor by majority of expanding it beyond the MC district. Um, there were a few alternate suggestions as to whether we just expanded it to MU and TC, uh, mixed use urban neighborhood and the town center districts, which are are more dense mixed use districts um, compared to MN, the neighborhood commercial district, which is our least dense or least intensive mixed use district. Um, there were members of the planning commission that felt that the neighborhood character of that district was not necessarily what they would recommend this use for. Um, and there were also some mixed opinions again on the setback requirement. There were some that were in favor of just removing it completely, didn't really have any additional concerns. Um, there were also a few that felt it best uh, to at least maintain the setback of a building where this use operated. So not the entire lot from another entire lot, but the building itself setback from another lot that had childcare, um, school uses, basically things that are oriented to providing service to individuals under eighteen. Um, they did not have any objections to the medical office or the hospital uses being removed from those categories that had um, additional setbacks. And I am just gonna check my notes quickly here to see, yeah, I think I've, I've covered, oh, residential uses is one of the other categories that the group, you know, majority decided it shouldn't have the additional setback removed compared to residential and medical uses. Um, so the majority opinion, well, the planning commission voted unanimously that they were not in favor of the amendment, although opinions as to what they would be comfortable with differed. Um, there was nobody that said that they recommended absolutely no changes whatsoever to the code. They just did not prefer what was contained in this amendment. Um, so I carried back to the commission that part of council's thinking in this amendment was that we no longer really saw this use as one that was objectionable or adult oriented. Um, and so the amendment was drafted accordingly. I'm happy to answer any questions about that discussion if, if.
I'm, I'm sorry if I made a wrong. Um, in this area, you have beauty parlors that are capable being in here, right? You have, you have barber shops, correct?
Yes.
Beer distributors.
Okay, so my question is simply this. Uh, when you talk about grooming and you talk about appearance, you're talking specifically about a beauty parlor and you're talking about a barber shop, correct?
Um, we, well, we have those listed as service, general service uses.
Okay, how is this different?
Uh, well, I'm just carrying forward the opinion of the planning commission where they noted that people under eighteen could not avail themselves of the services.
Jake, I'm just trying to make a point. Okay.
Yes.
And, and Jack, to your point, I mean, we have beer distributors in there as an adult service organization, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Well, you know, we, we're really being selective as to what we're allowing and what we're not.
Which, I mean, yeah, to, to an extent, that's what a zoning code is for, but I understand your point that maybe thinking of this use as adult oriented and classifying it as such is not necessarily consistent with some of the other, the ways we've treated other uses that are for adults.
More often than not.
Yes.
And, and I, I mean, I do not have a tattoo. But more often than not, I'm seeing people with tattoos more often than not.
Yeah, I, I, I would say that it's getting more common, certainly.
And, and, okay, that's my point.
Any other questions from council for Miss Suska?
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Now, if anybody in the audience is opposed to the amendment, now's the time to come forward and address council if you so choose. Okay, is anybody in favor of the ordinance tonight that would like to address council during the public hearing? Now is the time to come forward. Seeing none. Um, members of council, unless anybody has something to add, that will conclude the hearing on the zoning amendment.
Thank you.
All right, uh, continuing on on our agenda, we have a additional public hearing uh, on conditional use applications by Legacy Life Distribution. So again, I will turn it back over to us.
Yeah. Mr. Corville. This one's a little more wordy. Um, okay, at this time I will call to order the conditional use hearing uh, on the application of Legacy Life Research and Development Inc. Doing Businesses Legacy Life. Um, is there anybody other than the applicant, is the applicant here, I should say? Okay, applicants in the rear, are there anyone here beyond the applicant seeking party status to participate in the hearing this? Okay. Are there, is there anybody in the public present tonight to provide public comment during the public hearing? Okay. Um, council will now hold a public hearing on the conditional use application uh, that was submitted by Legacy Life Research and Development Inc. Doing Business as Legacy Life for a property located at nine thousand Perry Highway, Allegheny County Block and Lot Number eight two five dash S dash three two two in the town's MC zoning district. The property is currently approved with a three-story brick structure. Conditional use approval is sought to utilize the property as a packing and creating warehouse slash storage business under the warehouse slash distribution use category of section thirteen oh three drink two one zero of the town zoning ordinance, which permits the warehouse distribution use by conditional use in the MC zoning district. The applicant must show compliance with section thirteen oh one point two five zero of the zoning ordinance, which sets forth the general conditional use criteria. There is no specific conditional use criteria for this use. Uh, notice of tonight's hearing was advertised and those was provided to the applicant and neighboring property owners pursuant to the MPC. Town council uh, exhibits A through H, which are referenced on the joint exhibit list, are entered into the record of this hearing. And they will be inserted into the hearing transcript if one is necessary, as if the exhibit list was read into the record. This point, uh, the applicants can come forward and uh, make a presentation to town council if you so choose.
Thank you for the invite uh, to speak. So I just want to clarify that Legacy Life Research and Development Inc. is a separate entity under the Legacy Life umbrella than Legacy Life Distribution. So we are filing this from the Legacy Life's different distribution.
Okay.
Just so, just to clarify that. Now, they're all under the same umbrella of Legacy Life, and Legacy Life has uh, been in the area for a bit of time as a legacy medical center, and the building is at the time, one-third of the building, the top floor is being used for chiropractic and sports medicine. Sorry, yeah, I will. Um, the, we are looking at about two thousand square feet on the second floor to represent the distribution center. Our distribution center will be storing and um, sending out very small vials for research and clinical uh, pre-clinical trial usage with partners in the field of uh, regenerative medicine and, and diseases of aging research. So these are, we, we are looking to really store all of our material in up to twenty ultra-low freezers and very small one cc vials. Um, our shipping and receiving will come on normal FedEx overnight trucks. We intend to, to receive probably once a week at most, and then sending out as client base. But we will never send out more than one a day since everything needs to stay frozen. We send on FedEx um, overnight trucks. So we really have a little, little impact um, on, on with that sense from a warehousing standpoint. Uh, we just need to do some internal renovations to the building to get it up to, to uh, compliance.
And your name?
I'm sorry, my name is Don Carter. I'm the Vice President of Operations for Legacy Life Distribution.
Any other questions for Mr. Carter?
Yes, what, what are the alterations that you have to make in order to bring it up to code?
Well, we, we, the code is, I should rephrase that, we really have to bring it up to be compliant with FDA standards. So we are, we have to, you know, have the backup generators in place. There's some HVAC um, changes that will occur to keep the temperature regulated in the freezer storage room especially. Um, so there's really, we're just kind of tearing down some, some uh, walls inside to rebuild the size of the rooms so that the HVAC systems can handle those kind of heat and then the backup systems so we could temperature monitor in real time and not lose viability, but we.
None of what you're storing is a biohazard, is that correct?
It is a, what is a, it'll be like, no different than a human material. So it's a low biohazard, but it is classified as a biohazard. But it's nothing that you wouldn't find from a normal clinic.
Are there conditions in place by the health department that you have to follow?
We're regulated by the FDA for our compliance and the, we do file with the, the state health department. But the basics of the distribution center is no manipulation of these tubes will occur. The, the manipulation occurs in the laboratory. The distribution center is just for storage and shipping. So we do have some um, some regulatory aspects as to, you know, a spill response um, to low volume spills, things like that, but there's nothing to merge.
See management plan them.
Yes, yes, we have a bio safety plan in place, emergency management, and uh, any, all the other regulatory compliance is dictated by the FDA.
You told us what's on the third floor. You told us what's on the second floor. What's on the first floor?
So the first floor is actually empty. Uh, the space is, is in not in use and not developed at all. So it's just sort of empty space so far. The, in fact, the distribution center only takes up half of the second floor. The other half is for um, consulting, training, uh, training of medical uh, uh, entities. The, the legacy has a uh, consulting arm of its business that it uses the other half for.
So your occupancy permit only relates to floors number two and number three?
I am not aware of that exactly.
Occupancy permit for the premises? Is it only applicable to floors two and three?
The occupancy permit?
Yes.
No, it, it was the occupancy permit that we currently hold was for the whole building.
Okay, but the, the first floor is undeveloped.
Well, the, the first floor, when we got the occupancy permit in two thousand nineteen, the first floor was developed and was part of Legacy Medical Centers, who was the tenant at that time of all three floors.
Okay, so legacy medical is no longer.
No, no, they, I, I represent Matina Realty. My name's Jim Gallica. We're the, we're the owners of the building. I also work with Legacy. Yeah, Legacy Medical Centers was the tenant of the building in two thousand nineteen. They, they took all three floors. Um, they, they became part of another company for a short time called Fountain Life. And they were doing a proposed build out on the first floor. Uh, they decided after the demolition part of that process, they decided to stop that development on the first floor. So the first floor is currently vacant.
And undeveloped.
It's undeveloped, that's correct. So currently Legacy Medical Center is leases the third floor and half of the second floor. The other half of the second floors is going to be leased by Legacy Life Distribution.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council?
So you're bringing in a, a larger volumes of this and putting it into one cc vials. Is that kind of the gist of?
Actually, the, the packing will occur at the laboratory space. We have laboratory space. It's a different entity out of uh, Colorado. So they will do it based on what our needs are. Some clients only want one cc tubes, so we will package as one ccs and send the majority of the bulk material that way. They will never be uh, opening those valves and redistributing that liquid. If they need a different volume, they would come to us. But typically, it's easier for us. The volumes are not usually bought more than ten ccs. So it's still easier for us to just send ten uh, individual ccs of, of, of product.
Okay.
Quicker you have regenerative medicine for knees, the happier I'll be.
Well, this is the, we are hopeful that that'll be a good response.
Any other questions?
And hips.
Yes. He doesn't need that.
I don't need it now. Do you know what's, we're good.
Thanks, Michael.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Last chance for the public. Any comments or questions from the public?
Good evening. Marcia Caliendo, one oh five two nine Abbey. Um, a couple of things, packing and creating warehouse slash story business. Didn't really sound like what he just described. Um, I, I understand it's a warehouse, but, and I, I really reflect some clarification on biohazard. Yes, is bodily fluid, which I, I, I'm just concerned about uh, the safety. I know it's FDA um, and the, the, the uh, audits and the uh, uh, inspections that will be done. So I, I'd like just to feel a little bit more better if we had just a little bit more information on.
I think they provided that to the zoning board, did they not? Weren't they grilled on that?
So, this was, yeah, this was previously reviewed at the planning commission. If it's okay, I can talk a little bit more about the use. Um, yeah, happy to, I mean, I. Uh, yeah.
Okay, so regarding the um, warehousing distribution use, this is actually a, a great question, definitely one that came up at the planning commission as well. Um, so what they are, what the purpose of this building is, you know, they may be connected to other tenants in the building, maybe they have an umbrella organization and whatnot. But this is its own distinct business, its own distinct operation. Ultimately, the way that they're submitting. So, because this use, which is for a, a pretty small volume of product, for sure. I mean, it's not what you traditionally think of a warehouse, like an Amazon distribution center or anything. There is no other use definition in our zoning code that covers a business that solely exists to ship things out from coming in from one location and sending it to another. So even though the volume is very low and, you know, the impact is not significant on traffic or anything like that, there's just nowhere else that they most appropriately fit a class. If they had a lab onsite, for example, these could function in tandem, and this would just be a shipping arm of a lab, which would be a regular office use. But because they're not currently tied to anything else, um, that's why they were slotted in under this conditional use process.
And, and to expound upon that, since they're not opening vials or anything like that, the chance of a biohazard is almost nil.
Yeah, I, I can't speak to their operations, but our, all I can say is their zoning code does not explicitly address biohazards or lack their huff, so. Um, yeah, the decision was entirely just based on what do they do day to day, which is send stuff that comes in and goes somewhere else, so. Um, that at least covers the use part.
The use part, I'm still a little bit sketchy on what exactly they're doing.
I would have to.
Yeah, yeah.
Mr. Carter. Welcome back.
Thank you. That's a, that's a good question too, uh, addressing the biosafety level. So the, this, this is a regulated by both this, the CDC has oversight, but FDA is our typical regulatory body. We have to classify this as a biosafety level one through four. It's you know, well, you don't want to have it in here, but two, one and two is where we fall and that is typical blood type products. But ours tends to be, is, is going to be much more clean because we do purification in any, in infectious testing and uh, toxic testing in the laboratory portion of the, of the business in Colorado. So this is, although it is classified similar to blood, it is usually, it definitely is considered safer due to the fact that we go through multiple rounds of, of testing for safety. And as you, to your point about uh, the biosafety or any kind of contaminant or contamination or spill, for say, it is very rare. I can't say that it can't ever happen, so we always have to prepare for it. There are spill kits that will be distributed through each room, especially the packing room and the freezer room, so that for some reason a tube falls and breaks, even though it's frozen and it'll still be treated as a spill.
And correct me if I'm wrong, but there are FDA regulations and state health department regulations with regards to emergency procedures.
Absolutely.
Should there be some sort of breach?
Absolutely. There's the FDA, um, we have to be fully FDA compliant. Our SOPs have to match uh, what their requirements um, would be when they come in for audits and inspections. So we expect that if we get the uh, approval and we start up up and running within, say, six months or so or more, um, the FDA will likely be in for an inspection within six months of us opening. So that, you know, that will kind of help validate our protocols, but we are, you know, um, work with the quality manager to make sure that that's all in place.
Do you require a permit to open from the State Department of?
No, this is similar to like lab space, so it's typically regulated through the federal channels, um, so through FDA.
Phrase the question. Do you need an FDA um, certification prior to opening?
We need FDA certification, but not prior to opening. We have sixty days from the time we open to get our, our licensing in place. Now, that paperwork's obviously already going and we have interaction with the FDA to make sure there's no major issues before we start. Uh, but yeah, we have sixty days after opening to, to file the final paperwork.
It's an ongoing process until you receive your certification.
Right, exactly. Now, we can, we, they will give us conditional approval immediately. Uh, but as long as our paperwork's in place, and so then after that, the sixty, the sixty days is where they give the license. And that's usually about when they start planning an inspection.
And in your experience, have any one of your a, any one of your facilities been turned on for certification?
No, the FDA is highly, highly regulates this field, and many fields that I've worked in before, unlike vaccine development with the University of Pittsburgh, have been even heavily regulated, but I have never had an issue where there isn't just minor, you know, clerical errors or just small things that we have to do. I have about twenty years of experience working with this type of validation, and so I, I sort of know what the kinks are when they start. And I've never experienced any kind of shutdown level um, FDA non-compliance.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? The public? Yes.
Robert Richards, Manor Court. Um, I just wonder what's, who are the clients that are this is going to? These individuals or they companies or?
The third part or? Round three? So that, that's a good question too. Uh, so there.
At the point we are working at now, we have research level products with potential clinical use. So we have partners that we can sell this to directly. Uh, but then after, you know, the lab itself goes through its process of developing it and it gets approval, it can be sold to clinics directly. Uh, but if that is not in our initial phase, this initial phase is just to use this as a research product to, to develop into potential clinical products in the near future.
So the, the products are being used at the clinical level for research?
For, for the clinical research development. So basically we're at the stage of developing a product where the research has, has reached its peak. And now we just have to go through the process of, of testing. And we have, you could prove use on, on an external factor. We can use this externally on humans, but we still have to go through the process to use it as an injectable.
So you don't want to share your special formula with this thing?
I mean, I can tell you a little bit about it. It's just basically a makeup of, of lipids that carry particular proteins, uh, very small lipid-based molecules that carry certain proteins into the cell that could help regulate the function of, particularly we look at neurogenetic, does, is, is neuro, yeah, things that are typically associated with aging.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's last for me.
Now, we didn't get the uh.
Close. Okay, any other public comments or questions? RJ, this will be on the agenda for consideration by council.
Um, you can vote on it as early as the next.
So council can provide feedback. It could be on the agenda as early as the next meeting. Um, with that, the uh, public hearing is closed.
Thank you.
If so, please just give me heads up because I have a couple of things that are planning. Last, I'm pretty much, but I'll put together.
Thank you, RJ. All right, at this time, uh, we have public comment for agenda items only. So you're welcome to come forward, state your name and address. You have up to five minutes for any comments on items on the agenda.
Ellen Wright, nine six three five Old Coomer Road, Allison Park, PA one five one oh one. Um, first, I want to acknowledge that the ordinance that's in the packet um, in, for the um, for the tattoo parlor, uh, changing the use for the, in the different zones. Um, I want to, it's nice to see that it includes uh, what exactly is being referred to in the minutes in the agenda. So it's nice to see that. Um, I had a question though, why the public hearing was before the planning commission had approved the minutes? Um, the information is in the inf, in the uh, staff report from the land use administrator as to what happened at the planning commission, but the actual minutes have not yet been approved. as to what happened at the planning commission, but the actual minutes have not yet been approved prior to the public hearing. And I was just kind of curious if that's typical or atypical to have a public hearing before the minutes have been approved. Um, next, um, for the public here, I would have made these comments during the public hearing. But the request for comments during the public hearing for the ordinance was if you were for or against the ordinance as opposed in contrast. Um, the public hearing for the conditional use application said, do you have any questions or comments? And so I was kind of curious, you know, why there was a difference in how the public hearing was handled for the two that one said for or against, and one said any questions or comments. So those were my comments on the agenda items. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Any other public comments? All right, uh, then at this time, um, we will uh, look for a motion for the previous town council minutes.
So moved.
Motion to approve a second. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Uh, continuing on, we'll get into reports of committees. At this time, I will turn it over to the administration finance committee chair, Mr. Casey.
Hopefully, everybody had an opportunity to look at their packet and look at our checklist in number five. Are there any questions?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank Ms. Great House for answering my questions and preventing a twenty minute explanation.
Thank you, Joe, and thank you.
No worries. Um, I did answer questions for Mr. Casey and Mr. Wall prior to the meeting. Does anyone else have questions on the checklist thing for May?
If not, then I will make a motion to approve checklist in number five dated May first, twenty twenty four to May thirty first, twenty twenty four, totaling one million, three hundred and sixty one thousand, three hundred and seventeen dollars and sixty seven cents as submitted to each member of council and posted on the bulletin board and the town website.
There a second?
Second.
There's a motion, a second. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Excellent. Motion carries.
Now, Ms. Great House, if you would kindly review our financial summary dashboard.
This evening's, uh, May financial report and dashboard included, um, revenues at thirty two percent for twenty twenty four and expenditures at thirty two percent. Um, for twenty twenty four, um, we are five months in to the year, so we should be anywhere around forty two percent. So we're in good shape for expenditures. Um, revenues, I'm not worried. The only major revenue source that we have collected at this time is business privilege tax. Um, we expect revenue to jump significantly in July and August with the collection of real estate taxes.
Perfect, thank you.
So the, um, while revenues are slightly below budget, I'm sorry, slightly below where they should be at this time of year. Um, I'm not concerned and it's consistent with prior year. Um. If you have any questions on the expenditure report, I'm happy to answer it. Um, we continue to be below that forty two percent, except for snow and ice control, which is very typical for us at this time of year, and we have purchased our minimum in salt. So I do not expect additional expenditures in that category, at least until the end of November, hopefully not until twenty twenty five.
Don't we have a backlog of road salt?
We have a full, um. My understanding is is that we have a full supply of salt at this time.
Thank you.
Great.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Ms. Great House.
Thank you.
Now call for the communications report, Mr. Lockman. Would you like to give that or are you not prepared or?
I have not had a chance to talk.
I would tell you it was in your packets. If there's any questions, uh, you can either ask me or reach out to John Bedarski for detailed information.
Excellent, thank you. Hey, junior council members report, Carson and Yuki.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, so short report this month, uh, first North Allegheny School of Distertal graduation, May thirty first. And students are currently enjoying a well deserved break.
Um, I have a few announcements to make about, um, North Allegheny's participation in science fairs. So the International Science and Engineering Fair is the most prestigious science fair for high school students. And I thought I was able to send three students this year, which is really rare in Los Angeles, California, and two students placed, which they received over ten thousand dollars in prize money combined. So I'm very proud of these, um, students. And for the Pennsylvania Junior Academy of Science, it is Pennsylvania's designated science fair. And I feel like any sent over twenty students to the competition at Penn State and seventeen students received the top award.
Nice.
Um. Carl, Carson and I are very excited to continue our term for this summer and next year as well. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
You don't run away yet. You're not done. You didn't talk about the crew.
Oh, well, yeah. Well, yeah, the North Allegheny rowing team that I'm on, uh, we made it to nationals, as you all know, uh, we did not advance to the finals, but you know what? We were, um, we made it to the finals, um, and North Allegheny hasn't made it to finals in rowing in over ten years. And so, yeah, I was very happy to make it to finals. Anthony was also in my boat. Um, it was a great weekend for everyone.
Excellent ride.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Okay. Moving right along, liaison reports, McCandless Industrial Development Authority, Mr. Arlo.
Uh, there was no meeting this past month.
Okay, thank you. The North Hills Council of Governments, Mr. Singer.
Uh, no meeting as well.
Public comment on administrative and finance committee items? Pro con or just public comment? Okay, thank you very much. Uh, I will now turn it over to Mr. Arlo.
Yeah, planning and zoning, uh, committee, uh, RJ, if you can. Pee it up.
Here I am again. Um, so we have two items on the planning commission agenda that we reviewed in June. The second one, unless anyone really wants me to go in depth again, we kind of covered that territory with the public hearing already, um, because that was the tattoo piercing parlor amendment. Um, the first one on your page, it's going to look a bit long, but that's just because this is the first time since the rezoning that the Rachel Carson Eco Village has appeared on this report. So I wanted to provide some backstory in the written report for, you know, anyone who's reading, but might not be familiar. Um, for those of us who have been following along and are familiar with where we're at, uh, this was the first planning commission meeting in which their actual land development application came before, um, you know, any of our voting bodies. So. Um, they're currently in review. There were no major, you know, bumps or roadblocks that that we discovered, uh, at that meeting. At that time, they were still working with, um, our fire marshal Jeff Whistler and to make sure that, you know, all of the fire safety requirements are satisfied since obviously it's a bit of an unusual condition with not a real road, um, going through the development. Uh, that we do have a review letter from Jeff that, you know, as long as they follow a couple of conditions of how far the buildings can be from the emergency access road, it's compacted, you know, to engineering standards, and they put a second fire hydrant at the back of the plan. Um, he has no issues with it and they've agreed to all of that and the our our engineers will be making sure that, you know, everything in the plan complies with those requirements during their review. Um, there were quite a few comments in terms of, you know, stormwater, um, grading, just overall design, not surprising with a site of this complexity. Um, and you know, a bit of an unusual thing that we don't see often. So nothing to be alarmed by, just some work for their engineers to do. Um, we had a really good meeting with them administratively today. Uh, to make sure that they understood, you know, what they need to do to be revising the application. Um, and it looks like they will be skipping the July planning commission meeting, going to confirm that tomorrow. Um, and just taking a little bit more time to to get those revisions in so we can have a complete review letter for August.
I would question, I know that Jeff Whistler's been involved in this, but have we talked to the other first responders? The ambulance authority because of the access roads and the the police department?
Um, so that's not typically a referral that we make during land development review. The emergency access requirements review runs through the fire marshal. Um, not that I'm opposed to sharing the plans by any means, you know, but if the road is rated for a fire truck, it can generally. Yeah, and and that's what it has to like to turn around everything. Yeah, yeah, they like they have a hammerhead at the end since they don't have a true cul-de-sac or anything like that, and that has to meet the turning template for a fire truck as well as be able to support it. So you know, it it wouldn't move forward from Jeff's review unless it was.
It was just off the top of my head.
It's a great question. I mean, absolutely, but, um. Yeah, I think that that's probably what the what the code reviewers are thinking as well, if it can handle one of those, they'll probably be okay with an ambulance.
When, when do you think they're actually going to come forth with a, an actual plan for approval, either by planning or?
Well, that's, that's what we're in review of right now. So, yeah, so this meeting was the first meeting that they submitted their full on land development plan.
So you think it'll come before council in like October?
Um, well, I think that their target is August because of course they, since they had the Chatham site before, but then it fell through, they had already purchased all of their buildings which are in storage somewhere. So I know that that the group is eager to keep things moving while they are paying for all of those buildings. Um, so they're hopeful that they can get it right, you know, enough this round that we can have no more material changes to the site, which is typically when the planning commission will take action, when any comments that are left are. You know, it's not going to change the way the site functions or what's really, you know, add a new modification request. Maybe there are just some little tweaky things that they need to figure out. So, um, if the eco village has, you know, things go the way that they would like, then the end of August would be when you all are seeing it, but it could certainly be after if there are more things to work out.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Any other questions, comments?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Even roll there, Doug.
Liaison reports, planning commission, I was unable to attend earlier this month, but, um, the the information's in your packet, um. If you have any questions, I'll try to answer them or or RJ. Trish.
Trish, I don't know if Trish can actually speak right now, um, so I will tell you that the information is in your packet, and if you have any questions, you can reach out to her.
Public comments on zoning, planning, committee items? Barring none, I will turn it over to Mr. Giorgetti, recreation committee.
News on reports, finance, finance development and promotional committee for the Heritage and Cultural Center.
Art. It was a, a meeting of the, uh, finance development promotional committee for Heritage Cultural Center. The, uh, one in your packet is actually from May, fortunately.
I think we had both, if I recall. I think both did make it.
Okay, they make it.
Yeah.
Uh, highlights were the, they need some millings for the drive, the back driveway and the chute box. Uh, the nineteen fifty three chute box was fixed by Mr. Chris Eddy. Um, there's a video, uh, going to go up online on YouTube and several uh, the broadcast class at NA made some YouTube videos, um, that you should look at there of historic items at the Heritage Center.
Next is activities advisory ad hoc committee, Ms. Clinton, but. Again, I don't believe she's available to speak, uh, however, there was no meeting. There any public comment on recreation committee items? During that, I'll turn it over to our town manager. Uh, I do not believe we had a town manager report, uh, which is okay because we are in an interim phase. Um, but our interim managers are working well with staff and council to continue to keep things moving forward at the town. So thank you for all of your efforts. Um, included in, um, your packet was the engineer's report, Kelly is here this evening. If there are any questions for her on that.
I do have one comment. The state's down there messing around at your festival site, site right there at the entrance to Oak Ridge. So you were away, I don't know if you were aware of that, but that pipe that goes underneath Pine Creek Road from the Harmony and the Harmony over, uh, it, they got severely clogged and created a flooding area there. The state came and tried to clean it out and they tried to bore up and pull some stone out and they, they put in a a pulvert, I guess, all the way down to the creek. So it might affect your, what you're doing.
I did, um, I did reach out to the contact of the state about the cleaning of the other pipe there, and they did say it was scheduled for the fall. Um, this fall to get that pipe clean, but I didn't hear anything about that. So I'll go out, take a look at it and just make a note and make sure we're on the same page.
Thank you.
Yep.
Uh, no other questions for engineer, uh, to the town attorney's report?
Uh, report was in your packets and if you have any questions, we can chat about an executive session following the meeting.
Thank you, sir. Uh, there is no old business. We do have two items of new business, uh, deferred retirement option plans. I'm going to turn it over to Trish to tee these up, if that's okay. And then we'll be seeking motions.
We have two police officers, Lieutenant Basil and Sergeant Guzzo, who are requesting to enter the drop. This is a housekeeping item. Housekeeping item as part of the pension plan document, they're required to give council a thirty day notice prior to entering the drop. Um, I believe Mr. Basil, um, is planning to enter the drop September first and, uh, Sergeant Guzzo is October first. Um, there is an error on the agenda tonight. I put Christopher Guzzo instead of Christian Guzzo, so I apologize. Please, when you make that motion, change that to Christian instead of Christopher. Um, but both officers have put in the required uh, twenty six years of service and fifty two years of age. So, um, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. Again, this is a housekeeping item and these amounts will be funded by the pension plan.
Thank you for that. Uh, so is there a motion, uh, for the, let's do the two independents, somebody wants to make a motion on the first one? By all means.
Motion to accept the deferred retirement option plan agreement and election of Lieutenant Jeffrey Basil of the McCandless Police Department.
There's been a motion. Is there a second?
Oh, second.
There's been a second. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, second one?
Make a motion to accept the deferred retirement option agreement and election of Sergeant Christian Gazzo of the McCandless Police Department.
There's been a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Um, at this time, uh, there is a chance for any non-agenda comments from the public. Please come forward, state your name and address. You'll have up to five minutes for anything that was not on the agenda.
Irene Caliendo, four, one, one, ha. I know everybody's busy and there are a lot of important things on the agenda, but least you think we are no longer interested. I would once again like to request that you reinstate the virtual attendance option for town hall or town council meetings. When the time changes, it just becomes really difficult to maneuver the dark and the weather and et cetera, et cetera. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. All right, oh, I'm sorry.
Hi, Marcia Caliendo, one of five, two, nine, Abby. Um, I just want to thank the public works department for their efforts last week. Uh, Monday's storm was not that long, but pretty darn destructive. And I think it took a long time for everybody to get their power back. I hope everyone's power is back, but I know that they they really worked hard and so I just wanted to. They normally don't hear a lot of commendations from the public, so I just wanted to give them props.
You know, and I I agree wholeheartedly with you, Marcia. As a matter of fact, I've, I've had a note to the Department of Public Works. They were outstanding. They, they brought in, they brought in twelve people and they ran. They didn't just work. They ran from place to place and they made sure that our streets of McCandless were cleared. And I mean, they were cleared that night. So amen to you.
And I know it's not public works, but what the heck happened the other night? Was like three transformers exploded or something like that?
Ninety, ninety-five degree weather will do that.
Oh, yeah, so.
Base load.
Hopefully it wasn't a hu- a huge disruption for a lot of people, but kudos to the electrical workers, too.
Thank you for your comments.
Barbara Richards, uh, three oh five Manor Court. Um, I just wanted to speak to you about a, um, a problem that's been going on for several years in, um, the ward that I live in. It's a house at Reineman and Ridgeview. And I don't know if you're aware of it, I'm sure, Jack, you are, you've spoken about it. It's terrible. It's been that way for years and years and years. And last, I guess it was last year. Um, the guy put his car up on blocks and, um, facing it toward the street. It's in his driveway and I just had a conversation before with, uh, with the chief and, um, about that it's in his driveway. It's not on the street and, um, I really hope something can finally be done about this because now he has painted F you all. He didn't spell it out, F you all on the side of the car and I. He didn't spell it out, F you all on the side of the car. And I have a a photograph that. I mean, it's just a slap in the face besides being an obscenity and a disgrace to a, a beautiful neighborhood. And I'm sure he's referring to all meaning the residents around and also the town for not doing it. I understand and Jack has told me that they tried to do things and, um, to no avail, I guess. I don't know what's happening, but something has to be done. Um, the chief has given me, uh, some information about contacting the directly Mike McLean, I guess it is the, um, and speaking to him, I've complained on the, the form online and all that, never heard back from anything from anybody. Uh, I don't know what's going on, but it really needs to be taken care of. There are children that are asking what that is, that recognize it. Thank you. And, um, we shouldn't have to see this stuff. At, you know, when we pass and I go past it several times a day and it's just a block down from, from Grubbs Road. It's a well, Reineman is a well-traveled road. And, um, so if, I don't know, something to be taken care of, that would be really nice. Thank you.
I mean, it looks dangerous like that, like it's going to fall off the blocks.
Yeah.
If there's a child or something.
To, yeah, into Reineman. Yeah, yeah, that's dangerous.
Thank you for your.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other non-genetic public comments?
Ellen Wright, nine, six, three, five, Old Kuma Road, Allison Park, PA, one, five, one, oh, one. Um, the zoning comes up so often in these conver, in these meetings. It might be nice to have a new zoning map here in the, uh, council chambers. So we can look and see, I know it's online, um, but when it's actually being referred to, it might be nice to have a paper one. And I was kind of like looking around the room, where could it go? And there are nice plaques here to former council people and there are plaques over here. I don't think the folding doors ever get opened up. Maybe it could. So, and you know, from a historical point of view, it might be nice to have the old zoning map to kind of refer to. And I, I think Bruce Betty used to, and I don't know if it's in your office, but I think there used to be a printed out zoning map. Um, and I think it was in his office, but we refer to the zoning so often that it might be nice to have the current and the past one actually here. So that's it.
Thank you for your comments. Are there any other comments? Okay, uh, this time we will adjourn to executive session to discuss personal matters. I have a motion to adjourn.
Go move.
Is there a second? All those in favor? Opposed, motion carries. Thank you, everybody.